Amy, what? Conversation down, please. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Franklin Planning Board February 24th, 2025 meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded as well as on Zoom. The Zoom caller number is 312-626-6799, with the meeting number of 85308863274. First items of business, we're going to take care of some general questions before we get into the actual meetings. So Amy, if I could go to you for the 81P and A&amp;R Lewis Drive?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. They suspended an 81P for Lewis Drive. The plan is to move two existing lot lines, is on Lot 2 and Lot 13. What appears there were three lots that they're combining down to two lots. There's no new buildable lots in there, and these lots do comply to existing zoning.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions? Just more of a clarification, okay? Make a motion to approve the 81P D A&amp;R for Lewis Drive. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item of business, Amy, this would be a partial formage for 16 homes out.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a private definitive subdivision. It consisted of two buildable lots. The first lot was built a few years ago and was given a partial formage at that time. He's in here for the second lot, which everything's completed except for the final pavement on the roadway. He has indicated that that'll be done in the spring when the weather gets better, so he's here with the partial formage to get the occupancy for the second house.
Okay, Mike, did you take a peek at this? Was it good or bad?
Thank you, Jim, and I haven't. I haven't seen this. This, I know this private subdivision dates back a long time ago. It goes back to 2003. I do remember at one point we looked at it, I think it was before they did the law release, before they built the first house, but that was well over 10 years ago, so I haven't looked at anything since. I was in charge of the SASS. I think there's a bond still being held.
So there's actually no bond on this private subdivision, but Beta did do the observation, and they actually provided that with the first house, yeah, that went around. And at the same time, he was just waiting to put down the final binder coat, so Beta will go out when the final formage comes in to...
This one's just the partial?
It's just the partial one.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions? Make a motion to approve the partial formage for Ryan Estates for Homes Out. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next item of business, this would be just a discussion for 105 Beavis Street. Amy, if I could go to you, Department of Planning, please.
Thank you. They're in here previously for the impervious coverage on the single-family house. That was approved by the planning board. They're looking to put a small addition on. I think it's about 140 square feet. From what they're showing, they've put in all the drainage, they've completed that part, the prior part that was allowed for the patio and the pool area, and now they're putting in a little bit more of an addition. So the impervious surface will be at 31.8%, which is still below the 35% with, including the stormwater improvements that they need on their site.
So they need to see there and then that's... Anybody have any comments or questions? Make a motion to approve 105 Beavis Street. This is for the building inspector, correct? Amy?
Yeah, it's really just general business if the planning board is comfortable with them moving forward without altering the special permit, the current special permit in place.
Make a motion to approve 105 Beavis Street impervious improvements. A second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Go to our next item, which would be, this would be a continuation of Panther Way Senior Village, special permit and cycling application. I understand more of an update. If you want to approach the mic, we'll give you a name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, good evening. Brad Chaffee, Camper Property Group here in Franklin, applicant. So yes, tonight, just we got some comments back from Beta, comments from the last meeting we had, so really just to kind of just go over a few items, just to get just some opinions and some questions we had. Rukadro from our engineering team, unfortunately, is traveling. He is on Zoom. His flight got canceled, so he is stuck somewhere much warmer than this. I won't divulge too much, but he's able to kind of open this up and kind of go through a couple of questions we had, whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, Amy, Department of Planning?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can just go over some comments from the last meeting. From my original comments, the comments that the board had provided about the town of Franklin has exceeded the 2.5% unit for senior housing, so the board will need to grant a waiver for that. Also should provide verification that DHCD will accept the seven affordable units that are currently being proposed. The applicant should identify the affordable units on the plan. Applicants should show the location of the driveway north of the site, just to make sure it's less than, or greater than 150 feet, otherwise that will require a special permit. Recommended the ocean, the open space be contiguous throughout the entire site. Just note that no revised plans were submitted. We did receive, and everyone should have them, these color renderings that are showing for the buildings. So comments from the last meeting was to provide more access for the walking path, consider removing the pickleball court and adding a bungee ball court, or putting it over towards the warehouse building that's currently there. Color plan outlining the open space, providing more amenities. Fire has provided a letter, which is in your pocket tonight, and providing the actual amount of units allowed versus the bonus units. I, probably within the next semittel that they come in, I believe these items will be addressed to the board, but we have not received any revised plans to say that any of those items have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't get too deep into this one, but I'll go to the rest of the board. Do they have any comments or questions?
Are you still looking for a waiver for the, was it one of your setbacks that needed a waiver?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're still looking for the waiver for the wetlands to be processed through, that complicated formula?
Yes, and I believe Mr. Gudrow might be able to touch him on that, too, whenever you're ready.
My only comment on that is that I know we didn't receive any of you guys' plans, but I think at the last meeting I had asked if you could tell us how many units you would have if you did not get those waivers. What would you...
I'm sorry, could you just speak up a little bit, because it's very hard to hear you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just asking to find out how many units could be fit on the property if the waivers for calculating the wetlands for the open space, as well as the setback requirement, were not granted. I was just curious how many units could be provided in this project without those waivers.
Jay?
Looking forward to new plans. Appreciate the renderings.
Mark?
Same.
I also second that. Appreciate the renderings. One question I had through the chair is, I believe, with the last plans that were presented, you had indicated that the units were single-story units, but these renderings all look like two-story units. So is it like a loft space?
It's really a window that goes into the attic, just to make it look like it's not a lower ranch, but there's no floor up there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. That's all. Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick ones before we go to the audience, and I'm just going to ask the audience when they respond. Just, we're going to keep it brief, because we don't have anything new in front of us. But I guess this will go through Amy or Gary with the traffic study. The traffic study was just limited to the site. I'd like to see it expanded.
I believe, I believe Jacqueline's online.
I'd like to see a bit more, basically, with high school in operation, high school, and I would, and all, hurry up to get some real numbers for that. I also had, how many yards were you anticipating for?
The exact number I'm not, it's around 100,000.
So I guess I'm going to throw it out there now, bear in mind that you're going to have to do some road reconstruction upfront on Panther Way after running that many trailers, or running like 3,800 trucks. So just take that into consideration. So traffic, we're kind of limited. If anybody has anything from the audience, just keep it short and brief, because this is, we don't have any new information, but if you want to just approach the mic, go ahead. There's going to be more meetings on it anyway, so, and if not, we can wait till the next one. Could you speak up, please?
We're asking for any public comments related to the Panther Way Senior Village at this time. If anyone has any, we don't have any new plans or new information per se from the last meeting. So if you have new comments from the last meeting to this meeting, we'd be happy to hear from you.
So we just want to keep it brief, because we don't have anything new in front of us per se, other than rendered drawings.
Lisa Harvey at 88 Highwood. Just a couple of things. First of all, I caution the board about accepting renderings, because the renderings that were submitted by the same developer with respect to that last project, that is not what we got. It doesn't look anything like the pretty...
Sorry to interrupt. Which project are you referring to?
The one that is the, the commercial space that they put in on Panther Way. It's that ginormous red and white building. It doesn't look anything like the renderings that were presented, so I just caution you all about accepting renderings, because they do seem to not end up the way they started. I, I also, I did express concern about setbacks at the last meeting, and I'm not going to beat that issue again, but I would just say that the developer at the last meeting indicated that they could put a number of more units in on the property. So I'm sitting here saying if they could put more units in on the land as it exists, then they don't need to alter the setbacks. They could just expand into different areas of their project, and maybe they cut down on some of the open space, because quite frankly, I think the setbacks are more important for the, for the neighborhood and the abutters than expanded open space for the residents who are living there. And I do, again, I did see in one of the reports, there was, and I believe this came up as a matter of concern at the last meeting, about two ways for the people who live in there to get in and out, basically, because it's kind of like a cul-de-sac. And so they, they went through great pains to make sure that the residents could go in and out two ways, except for in and out is just onto Panther Way. There's only one entrance and exit, which is onto Panther Way, and I did request that they have to have a second or move their access to 140. So those, those are just three of the things. I'm not going to, I'm going to turn it over, because there are a lot of other people here tonight, so I'm going to open up to them. Thank you.
This won't be the last meeting, so don't get along. Either one. Just name an address, please.
Yeah, John Mitchell, 16 Highwood Drive. I have three points, and I'll do the best I can to be brief. The February 12th, 2020 Beta Report focused on traffic situation, and it involved only the impact heading south onto Central Street, not the dangerous intersection that exists right now just to the north of Holmes' property. And this intersection is where the police station is, where Highwood Drive comes in, and where the skating rink empties into, okay? The proposed street put in would empty out onto Highwood, or onto Panther Way, about 150 feet south of this. This is far too close, okay? Already, the traffic situation is really terrible, okay? We have 300 Highwood residents. We have, what I just pointed out, the skating rink, the police station, also the high school. And another thing about the Beta Report is that it was conducted between 4:30 and 5:30 on a Friday afternoon. That's not when all the traffic happens. All the traffic happens between 2:00 and 3:00 when the high school lets out, okay? And so I would...
That's why I asked for additional progress.
Right, okay, well, thank you very much for that. Second has to do with, whoop, the pickleball court, okay? It's no longer? That is wonderful. I live very close to that, and I could only imagine the sounds coming at 6:00 AM from there, so thank you very much. Then I was going to ask a little bit, or not a little bit, I'd like some information about the units themselves. Are they one-story, two-story?
One-story.
One-story?
Brad, if you want to give a...
They're just one, one-story ranches. I guess, the mixed-use building in the front of the property would be three stories. That has a commercial and some parking on the first floor, and that'll be setup of smaller units. So they have a, just a, they're all still one-story living.
Okay, and my comment about that would be, unit number one, it's farther north than the other ones are. Could unit one be moved, perhaps? There's space down by 25, 29, out in that area there. And then I'd also ask about the egress that's coming out, and this was just mentioned. I just talked about the traffic situation there. Since this property empties out onto Central Street, there's room for at least a one-way egress coming out from this property onto Central Street next to CVS, okay? And so that the street, the proposed street, could be a dead-end street there, instead of emptying out onto Panther Way, because you also have the street, what, next to the bus barn there, going out on Panther Way, so... Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if Mark, we're going to make a motion to continue Panther Way meeting?
March 24th? To March 24th, second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item of business, this would be a continuation for a public hearing for 55 Constitution Boulevard. It's a site plan application. Clear out, that's appreciated. If you could just introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name's Todd Maury, Principal with Beals Associates. With me this evening, where is it? If I had a little chance, key from our office, as well as Jeff Sullivan from North Bridge Partners LLC. So the, since we were in front of you last time, this is in January, we've had a few back and forths with Gary and his team from Beta Group. They've been very gracious with their time. We had a couple of Zoom meetings, possibly some phone conversations between Tyler and his guys, as well as Gary and his team, just trying to sort through the rest of the issues. I believe we're there, with one exception, that we learned about this afternoon, and I think even on that one, we're extraordinarily close to the resolution on that. And if you want, we can talk about that quickly, or we can just say that it's very, very close. Yeah, the other thing we talked about last time we were here was some screening, and one of the board members requested a few views from what it would look like from King Street, especially the residences as you go up through King Street. So we, we went out, we took a, I started by just taking cell phone photos on King Street in front of those residences, and I was staring at trees. So then we also, I came back, looked at the photos, and I said, that's not really telling us anything. We went back and then used Google Earth to go up and down through there. We did find a spot, as you're going up King Street with the fire department on your left, you can see just behind that corner, and if you want to flip to that one, sorry, I went, I went out of order before. I apologize for that, where you can actually see into the site. I think it's the next one, Tyler. Yep, that one. So up in the upper, upper left-hand corner there is that spot from King Street where you can see in there, okay? And just, you can see just past the corner of the fire department, there are still some trees that'll, that'll remain right there. The architect's rendering is just on the other side, and if you look very, very carefully. Right there, you can see a Pico building, and back from here, you can see the Pico building. So rooftop of the building comes right about there, right about where I made that. What we've done is we've gone back, we took a look at the parking spaces that were going up near that fire department side and the grading that we had there. We pulled that back so we could keep that tree buffer, the existing tree buffer, and we wouldn't need to cut, cut into there. And then on top of that, we also, as we moved that burn back, we were able to put some more evergreens in, another line of evergreens there, okay? And then the other thing we did, now I'll come back to the landscape plan, if you could, the front one, is as you go around the other corner of Building B, up towards where the senior living would see through there, we added a fairly dense row of evergreens along that section, too. Gary's team had mentioned that one of the things we could do to make that screen even more efficient is to stagger those. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to take a look at what we can do to stagger those trees in there without cutting further back into the existing trees, just so we'll increase the density, the visual density through that area. So with those changes, I think, I, I think, actually, they're from a screening perspective, I think there were fantastic changes, so... I appreciate the comment. I'm glad we looked at it, and I'm glad it, I think, I think it's better.
Okay, good, thank you. I guess I'll go to Amy, just for a quick review.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. They, like I said, the applicants have submitted revised plans. I know that they've sat down with Beta and Mike, and had one or two sit-down meetings with them to go through this. Just one waiver request to allow the site laying to extend past the property line. So that would be the one waiver that they've requested, and kind of defer to Beta for any comments on stormwater.
Good, thank you. Mike, do you have...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We didn't have any other comments, but I just would make the comment that if the board does decide to approve the project, as a condition of the approval is the issue that they have to relocate some of the utilities on site that are inquired modifying existing easements. That's something that should be conditioned where it's done before they are final, before the final formage, before they get the CO, not necessarily before construction, because that way they can build the utilities and then have the easements in the right location at that point.
You have to move some of it in order to put it in?
Yeah, so they're going to eliminate the old easements, and they'll put the new, they'll put the new utilities in, abandon the old ones, and then relocate the easements. We can work with the applicant going through the town council, get those approved, but that's something that should be done before the final formage is completed.
Garry?
Yes, as Todd said, we, we've, we've met quite a few times relative to this to try and straighten out some of the stormwater issues. This was a fairly complicated site in terms of the fact that, you know, the existing beaches have pretty much all been converted over to a wetland. So once again, we're dealing with the existing stormwater beaches as a resource area. But other than that, they have made, they have maintained equivalency with regard to peak flow rates and volumes to all three of the discharge points associated with the site. And they are doing quite a bit relative to treating not only the proposed, the expansion, but also the existing. So we're getting quite a bit of treatment associated with the runoff coming off of this. As he stated, we do have one little issue with water quality, volume, and one of the subsurface systems behind Building... Is it B or B, Building 2?
Building B system 2.
Building, Building B system 2. Other than that, everything else, you already mentioned the issue relative to the landscaping, which we thought maybe staggering them would be an easier way, although that's, we're pretty much left after the board. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
I'll go to the boards. Mark, any comments, questions? No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No, I appreciate the consideration for the additional plantings and the revised drawings showing the egress and interest points adjacent to the handicap parking, so I think those are my primary concerns prior.
I was just going to say thanks for the extra effort. Wouldn't you realize your analysis in the field was out there? So a lot of people have given up, so, thanks, guys.
I was one of the made the comments, so I really appreciate you coming back and taking it to heart and showing the renderings and cross-section, and I think in the end, it will benefit the neighbors and, and the existing site itself. So thank you very much.
I, we do appreciate you guys did a great job, actually cleaning up an existing site for the line and the drainage and all that helps, so we do appreciate it. Just before I close, go to the audience. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Just before I close, go to the audience, is anyone in the audience have any question or comments? Okay. Make a motion to close the hearing on 55 Constitution Board Law, for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Appreciate all your good, good, your time. Thank you.
Yeah, which meeting?
Oh, wanna go March 24th? Is, oh, do you wanna go earlier?
No, I was gonna put it under general business on March 10th for the decision.
Okay, so continue to March 10th.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good, the next public hearing would be for a continuation of 124 or 126 Grove Street, site plan modification. Amy, are we doing?
What? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the plaintiff requested, these are comments from the last meeting. And this brings us back probably to about October, when the last time they were in here. And revised plans have been submitted since then. They have reduced the amount of units to 28 overall, 26 new units, and then the two existing houses that are on the site. More passive, the board requested more passive recreation.
No, no.
What?
No, grocery.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, yeah, March 24th.
Sorry about that. So, make a motion to continue 124 or 126 Grove Street until March 24th, for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the next item of business, this would be for a continuation of a public hearing for 488 and 496 Summer Street. This is a special permanent site plan application. And I wanna go to the applicants. Go to Amy for a brief overview, please.
Let's start over.
Now, you're, now you're.
I can start over. So, it dates back to probably about October, when the last time they were in front of the board, taking, wanted some time to make some changes to the plans. And some of the requests that the plan board had made was to reduce the amount of units, which they have. They're down to 26 new units with two existing units on site, which give them a total of 28. The board also requested some more passive recreation and community garden. The applicant has provided a walk-in trail throughout the site with benches and a community area that's to be determined, and a community garden. The applicant's proposed three affordable units, but the calculations require 15%, which would require four affordable units. So, that should be noted there. The two existing units on site would need to be deed restricted to be owned by an over 55 resident. Beta has provided the stormwater review letter to the applicant, which I know the applicant is still in the process of reviewing. Thank you. One more note, I know that this came up with the last, with Panther Way, just a little while ago, that we do exceed the 2.5% units and that the applicant should provide a brief explanation, which they are permitted to do, and if the board chooses to, can grant that waiver. Thank you.
I'm gonna go with, for a brief, and you just wanna introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Cannon, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. Cannon, Eric Cannon, on behalf of the applicant, along with Dan Merrick from Legacy Engineering. Thank you.
I'll go through Mike and those guys, we'll get back. So, Mike, questions or comments from you, from TPW, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the revised plans, so the roadway on site, it is a, it would be a private roadway. It does exceed the 600 foot that's in the subdivision rules and regulations, but they do have an emergency access also coming on Summer Street there, so there's a second point of access for emergency vehicles, they provided that. Just a couple of comments about the plans in general. They've been revised. One point, that there's the, behind units 23 through 28, there was a retaining wall that does reach as high as 16 feet high at one point. So, it's, I think it's reduced from where they were previous revisions, but that's about the highest wall that's there on the site. And then regarding to, regarding stormwater, just had some concerns about some of the disch, proposed discharges. I didn't have an updated stormwater report to compare the numbers for, to really dig into it. But basin number one is directed, the outfall there is directed directly to Summer Street. I feel concerned about all flows coming directly onto the roadway there. Drainage field number six, there's an outfall that's, that's directed towards the adjacent property line. That, and then drain fields three and four, a little bit less, but, but they're also kind of directed toward that same property line. It might be good if they can kind of redirect those further in the back where it gets onto the town property as opposed to the neighbor's property there, where there's more, less development. And then just a note about the sewer force main that's being proposed, where that ties into the town system. We'd just like to see a gravity sewer manhole on site, where it discharges to a gravity manhole on site before it enters the town system. That's a, that's an easier thing, I believe, so. That's really all I had, this time.
Good, thank you. Uh, Gary, would I propose?
Yeah, Mike's gone over quite a few of the things that we've commented on also, so. The only thing I will add is that we were a little concerned relative to the discharges also coming off of the stormwater system. Even, even to the point of being concerned about the, the uncontrolled areas, even just the lawn areas on either side of the lawn. And I think we were recommending that some form of infiltration structure be put at downgrading your toe, just before it goes over that real steep area. Other than that, they have gone subsurface. As Mike stated, there, there is, almost all the retaining walls have been eliminated except first, six units on the right side. I think it's like 23 to 28, 23 to 20, so 20 to 26, where they're up above 15, 16 feet.
How many linear feet is that? I didn't check. Sorry, I didn't.
Probably about 150, it's probably about 150. It's, it's across both, they're triplexes, they're triplexes, and it runs across the entirety of all three of, of both of them, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could give permission to share my screen, I can put the plan up on the monitor. I just need computer people to allow me to share my screen.
Debbie Maxine.
Thank you, Gary.
Maxine, can you, wait, you're not on Zoom, though.
What's the name?
Dan Merrick.
You want to, oh, there you are, okay. Yep.
All set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Merrick. If you could, I would say, if you could give us and the public a brief overview of the changes you made since the last meeting.
Sure.
Don't, just, just a brief one, I, I know it's still a work in progress, but to keep everybody in the loop of what's going on, as well as the wind.
Yeah, when we appeared before you in October, at the end of October, we showed you a concept layout of 30 units. The chairman requested we, we eliminate a couple more units, and we took up two more units. Now, we're down to 28 units. And the general configuration is very similar to what we showed you in October. We have a driveway coming in, we have a pull-up on the right for the male kiosk. We have a small community garden area here. And then as you're coming through, we have a cul-de-sac turnaround with an island, and we have five visitor parking spaces on the island. That's all pretty much what we showed. We did shorten the length of the dead-end road a little bit compared to what we showed you previously. That was because we eliminated two of those units. And then this was, behind here was formerly a storm, an open stormwater basin, so we put that underground. And what that basically does is it, it creates another amenity space, because it's just gonna be relatively flat grassed area. So, that's an area that the residents of the community could use for a garden if they wanted to, or a little bodgey court, or something like that, if they chose to, to do that. They would have that option. Stormwater management changes, as has been noted, everything except for the front stormwater basin's underground. We do have some discharge towards Summer Street. That's because stormwater presently discharges to storm, to, to Summer Street. So, we maintain, create some flows in every direction. We certainly can look at adjusting some of these outfalls some more, but they are sharply reduced from what the previous designs had. We have quite a bit more open space in this layout than we did in earlier versions of the design, so that also results in reduced stormwater. From a lot of these systems, we have no discharges until you see maybe the 25 or 50-year storm, but that's something I can explore more with, with your consultant.
On the board, you're, you're good? Yes. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Sorry?
Questions, comments?
No, I, I do have a couple of questions. I mean, Amy mentioned that you're requesting only three affordable units versus four.
We'll fix that.
Excuse me?
We'll change that.
All right, thank you. I think, as far as the open space, I think it needs to be delineated a little bit more. There, there are some areas that you have identified as open space that are really, the areas have been disturbed.
So, the board requested that portions of the open space be active, active, be able to be actively used. So, those are areas that we need to disturb to build community gardens and paths and things of that nature. So, everything that's hatched on the plan is what's designated as open space. The only areas that are being disturbed are areas where we're building community gardens, building walking paths, that kind of thing.
All right, thank you. I guess, other question is in regards to units one and 10, has that been discussed? Are those, current residents gonna remain there? I ask that question probably.
I think so.
Okay.
But obviously, they would have the option to.
Right.
To move whenever they wanted to, but I believe so, yeah.
Well, my concern there is that if they remain there, that we're really only getting 26 spaces, right? If they're over 20, over 55, correct?
They are over 55.
They are.
Yes, yes.
How about the pool area, is that gonna be?
Everybody, everybody who owns one of these units will have to be open.
Okay.
Including people who live presently in the two houses, if they choose to stay.
Now, would the pool area be open to the community, or just for that particular resident?
That particular resident.
That particular resident. Will it be accommodations for, if the open spaces, to be open to the public, for the public to park in areas, because there isn't any parking on, on Summer Street?
Is that something the board is interested in, having public access to the site?
No. And, thank you, all my questions meant asked, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the revisions. I just think, you know, again, looking at the site and knowing that we've come down in numbers, it just feels a little too dense still. And I think you could create a little more active open space by taking the two quads and making them two triplexes, or take the quad that's closest to the cul-de-sac and make it a duplex, and then you'd have some more continuous and contiguous active open space for the residents. Other than that, that was my primary, one of my observations here. That's really it.
Jake?
All right. I would echo Chris, thanks for the revisions, especially something like the regrade of the roadway. I know that stuff's not exactly easy to be dropping vertical curves like you did. Appreciate that. I think we've come a long way on dropping the density, so I'm personally okay with that. I remember this, and I, this is a loop when we started, right?
Started with four, four.
Yeah, it was, it was the loop you had to get around that cul-de-sac. So, I think we've really kind of shrunk this a lot. So, I appreciate the compromise there. I had a few comments, let's see here. All right, so the open space, how do, that are behind, it's like behind unit 11 and 12, how is that supposed to be accessed? Because it, I mean, you could walk down the road there, but the gravel path kind of ends before then. It doesn't seem to be like a definitive way to access that unless you would have walked down the fire road and kind of go around the gate.
That is the intent, is the, the fire road is reinforced turf, and it's landscape there. So, the fire road is basically, it's actually gonna be a great walking trail for the residents. So, the intent is, if they wanted to get down to that space back there, is they would walk down the fire road. And we did provide detail for a path around the gate. If you look at the detailed sheets, detail for the, the gate for the fire road, there's a specification that a path be provided around the gate so that people can walk around it.
Daniel, if I have? Who is it?
No, I don't want you to bet her.
Maybe it's the town. Yeah, is it mine?
That's interesting. I have plenty better.
All right, I will take a look for that deep, oh, no, I found it.
Did you find it?
Yeah, no, I found it, thank you very much for pointing that out. I appreciate that.
So, the, you know, the intent is that they would just walk down the fire lane, which is a wide, wide grassed area.
I didn't notice the slipper on the gate, the detail for that, so that's, that one's on me. The infiltration basin, I think it's five, it's the first one when you come down around the curve. I have like a horrible thing about infiltration basins being too close to retaining walls.
Okay.
Could we rotate that thing clockwise a little bit?
Sure.
Because it would pull it away from the retaining wall, and that's kind of reduce my anxieties there.
Yeah.
Especially with like the lomy sand, it's not, you know, it's just infiltrating enough.
There you go. You go ahead, Amy.
I was kind of curious as to what everyone else's opinions were on a sidewalk on both sides throughout the entire site. It's only a 22-foot wide road with a cul-de-sac, but. Yeah, I was in between on that one. And then the last comment that I really had was, there's an existing Cobra head out on the road. Was that used when you did your lighting analysis?
No, I don't have specifications for that.
No, all right, because I'd be curious as to what it would look like if you would have put a Cobra head opposing that. But with one right there, it almost, doesn't seem like you need it, because the, just illuminating that corner enough? I was curious as to how that, you know, with the zero there, I'm like, well, that wasn't taken into account.
No, I don't have the specs on the town slide, so I really can't model it. I need an ID as well to model it. We're just proposing basically, like, a little bit of larger version of what you'd find in your yard, lantern-style light posts periodically all the way down the driveway, so we don't have, you know, really elaborate lighting proposed.
And the intersection is gonna be, the driveway will ought to be pretty clear? Over there, the driveway for the proposed development will be fairly clear. It's not like it's gonna be vegetated around the corners, right? Yeah, I guess with the Cobra head across the way there, that's, that's probably all right. Mike?
It's driveway across the street, almost.
I hate to get really specific with lighting, but what, is there any way you could provide? Yeah, this is, we're going there. Mike's in the ID department now. Well, I mean, they put me in charge of light, so this is what I'm.
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of that, so I apologize.
So, does the town use separate, like, different luminaire level Cobra heads? Or do we all have kind of like one?
There's a standard subdivision rules and regulations for, mainly directed towards cul-de-sacs and small subdivisions, but on main intersections, there is a, I could check with the highway department, but we do have some higher intensity light luminaires at certain locations.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what the specs are off my head, but they do have different levels. They're all LED, we have gone to all LED.
Is there any way you could, at a minimum, provide the Cobra head spec? So, we could take it, I mean, it's, it's, the Cobra head's right across the street, it's probably fine, but.
Yeah, I could.
He's asking if I can incorporate it into the photometric analysis.
Yeah.
So, for that, I need to know the model, and I need to get data from the manufacturer that. If you could send me the pole, if you happen to know the pole number, location, send me an email, and I can work with the highway department to find out what we have in that pole.
Yeah, just, it's probably fine. If the driveway's gonna be clear, it's most likely fine. But just in case, we need to increase the luminance, because we're going from a road to an intersection.
Sure, yeah, no, we can evaluate what's actually on there now, we have the information on that.
Thanks, no problem. That's all I got.
Okay, okay. You ready?
Mr. Chairman. Can you speak up fast? I will try to test, sorry. For this project, I am still not convinced that this is meeting the general requirements or general feel of the senior village bylaw. I, I just don't see it in its current capacity. I realize that you've brought down the number of units. What, what did you say you originally started with, 40?
Forty-four.
Okay, so then, it's funny, during your statement, I think you said 30 units. Okay, so then, it's funny, during your statement, I think you said 30 units originally, but it's 44, and then we came down, you mentioned the chairman asked to knock it down a couple units, because more than a couple, but that's okay. So now we're down to 28. And seeing that we have met the 2.5% of existing senior family residences and shall be the number of senior units allowed in town, unless we choose to waive that. So your base number that you could potentially get without any bonuses is 19 units. So for me, while I still don't think that 19 units is in the nature of the senior village development, listening to my other board members, if it's going to go to a point where this gets approved, for me, I, I would like to see it brought down even further to your base number of units of 19, because if you need, you need a waiver from us before you can even move forward with doing this. So right now, I, I don't support a waiver, I don't support the project. I don't support the two single-family housing units being part of this. It's very convenient that one of the members that lives, or one of the people that lives in the house is 55-plus, whether they stay in it or not, so they got pretty good there. So Sylvia, you have it to use their single-family home use with a pool for themselves, it's not really part of the development, let's be honest there. So I still have our time with it, I really do. I'm glad that you introduced some more active recreation areas here, but 16-foot retaining wall, to me, just seems, that's a lot. Those poor people that live near retaining wall, it's going to be not a pleasant view. So that's just how I feel about it. It just, you know, I don't feel as though you've provided a whole bunch of justification for why this is something that's a critical need, as it states in here, let's see, purpose of the bylaw, blah, blah, blah. The board may waive the limitation if the board feels that the proposed development fulfills a critical senior housing need for the town of Franklin and the surrounding region. We all know there's a housing crisis, so let's not go down the road if we don't support this, we're not supporting seniors, we're not supporting housing. Let's just look at this and how it actually sits on this land, and how it impacts the butters, how it impacts that currently wooded property, and come up with some real reasons that approving it at the number of units that you're presenting is critical, because I don't see that evidence yet. So let's get some evidence here.
Jen?
Before I make statements, I have a couple of questions through the chair. I just couldn't find, forgive me if it's on there, but the, the units being proposed are this, they still the same type of units, meaning the same height, number of bedrooms, et cetera, as they were previously? I believe they were all three-bedroom, two-story plus.
Yeah, they're all shown as three-bedroom, but the reality is, you know, okay, if you're 55, most people who are 55 are still working, right? So even though the floor plan shows two bedrooms upstairs, one of those could be an office, one of those could be a guest room, one of those could be an exercise room. So yes, the layout's the same, but will everybody have three bedrooms? No, I don't think so. They'll be using these rooms for different things.
I guess in the spirit of a senior village, you'd expect that residents would be able to age in place, and while extra bedrooms are good for visitors, it doesn't, it feels like what's being proposed are more like traditional townhomes for anyone versus specifically for an over 55 community, and it feels like this overlay is being used as a way to increase density on what's otherwise a rural zoning district, which I have not agreed with from day one. I also absolutely don't think the two single-story homes should be a part of this. If this really was in the spirit of senior housing, which we do not, we are not in critical need of in terms of quantity in town, we, we all need all different types of housing to support more affordable options for everybody. We know there are a lot of people who would like to downsize into affordable home options, lowercase a, but I don't see how these will be affordable in that spirit. And also, everything we've heard from the community and all of the very hard work that's gone into the town's master plan, all that we've heard from the senior community, those looking to downsize, those looking for senior villages, have all talked about walkability to downtown and locations in town that allow for that additional community engagement in a walkable manner, or at least very close by. I don't see how this location supports, again, that sort of spirit of what we've heard from the community, of really being additional stock of options for an aging community who's looking to downsize in particular. So I personally, until I see something that really feels like it is in the spirit of a senior village, don't support what's currently being shown, independent of the reduced number of units. It could go, it might as well go down to four units and attempt to be, you know, a subdivision or something that's going in front of us. I just think this is not a very honest attempt to do something with this land that is appropriate for the zoning district in which it's located in. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, Jen has always said much better than I said today.
Greg, can I have one minute?
Sure.
Density is a tough issue, but at a certain point, when we're developing things, it's either don't develop it at all, or deal with a little bit of density.
Nobody watch it on the street.
If anybody can hear me out or not.
Brilliant.
We don't want it.
You'll have your time.
Well, when you start talking.
You'll have your time.
You guys are taking too much time now, because everyone's jumping on your seats.
Excuse me? You'll have your time to speak.
You're talking about lighting stuff, lighting.
That's what we do here. We review a plan, and it's a holistic approach for looking at all aspects of a plan.
Consider public safety.
That's what we have to do. We can't just skip over it.
You'll have your time to speak. Let him finish. He has the floor.
He, well, he already spoke.
Excuse me?
He spoke already.
You can leave now, if you'd like.
I'm not leaving.
Then sit there and be quiet.
We're going to leave to take five. Mr. Chairman, can we take five, please?
Yep, we'll take five.
Not going anywhere.
Great. We're going to give general comment, we're going to give two minutes per person. If you acknowledge somebody that said something earlier, just acknowledge them, just don't go in there deep with it. This is going to be back again, it's going to be continued, obviously. Respect the people on the board, respect the people sitting in the crowd next to you, and don't overtalk on the other end of this, because we're here as volunteers, just remember that. All right? I'll go to the audience.
All right. So, to offer my opinion on density, at a certain point, you either have to do things with some density, or not build them at all, because.
We don't want it.
What did I say?
It doesn't matter what you say.
You can be removed, young man. You hold your, hold your motion until he's done.
If this gets reduced to a certain point, that it's still developed, you're going to have 80% of the impact for 50% of the development. That doesn't make very much sense. That's not the sacrifice that the community should make for what it obtains, all right? It, it's not a linear, the impact from the development is not linear to the density. At a certain point, you have a much better, it's much more advantageous to the community to develop things with some density. We have taken this down from 40-something units originally into the 20s. I agree with the sentiment that the two units along the street are a little wonky, and it's not exactly in the spirit of this, okay? So it's not an ideal situation. However, things that are occurring on this site that are high-density development practices, there are no yards, these are shared walled units, there's a 22-foot wide road. If you look at the, the views from the street, you'll barely be able to see these things. There's a fair amount of buffer in, in between the existing lots in the area. There's open space retained in the back, and the town's open space, you will barely be able to see these things from. So, you know, much like Mr. Chafee's development, if we would have retained the same number of units there, but reduce the amount of site that would be developed, we're looking at the units going up in the air. So instead of one-story units, you're now looking at two-story units. So you're going to have the reduced impact on the site, but you're going to have the same density while we're going up. So there's a lot of considerations that need to be taken when we're looking at these things. So not an ideal situation, but if we're going to develop it, we have to develop it to a certain point, or not develop it at all, because there's no point in having 80% of the impact from 50% of the units.
Okay. Dave, if you ever want to approach the mic first?
I will, since you wanted to kick me out.
Name and address, please.
Brian Moran, Penny Lane, Franklin. First of all, how long has this project been going on?
Well, they signed with the board in July, and they had a meeting in October, and have since continued it, and the applicant doing that.
Because I'm not, I'm not anti-development. There's condos going up all over Franklin, down by the Big Y. My problem is the traffic, it's not safe. There's no sidewalk on Summer Street, that's a cut-through street, so the people walking literally have no protection. If the developer said I would pay for a sidewalk, then we would be inmeasurable towards it, but it's a one-way, it's all for him, that's it. I don't care if you can see in there or not, it comes down to safety. Now, I've had conversation with Police Chief Lynch over this, about safety, specifically on that street, okay? The speed limit is 30. Now, if you're coming from Rentham, you can be gliding downhill, and you're going to be going over 30. Now, they put a car up at Crossway Church, he backs in, to try to enforce the traffic. So I, I went over there one day, because I saw someone speeding by me, and he goes, "We're just doing traffic monitoring, we don't actually give out tickets." So I said, "Well, that's fine," but I'm not anti-construction or anything else, but the common sense says you don't do it, because there's, the infrastructure on that street, it's a cut-through street. If you want to build a condo, find somewhere else. And also, not only that, the traffic, you know what, you want to do the one on Starbert Street, too? Have you ever been down East Central Street? It's a parking lot. See, you got to control the traffic before you can go build out stuff. The town can't support it. The traffic's bad, someone's going to die over there. You know what? The police chief agrees with me. And the fact of the matter is, he says for every ticket they get out, the state police takes 90% of it. So there's no incentive to write a ticket. So you're just going to let the neighbors suffer. Whenever, whenever I, I lost my license for six months, and I have to walk downtown, and when I come back, I white knuckle it and hope I don't get killed, because that's the way people are, and you know it as well as I do, that people don't pay attention when they're driving. They don't, their heads down. I don't mind, I don't mind construction, but it doesn't belong there, and you both, some people up there said it's a little bit shady in nature, so if something's shady, we shouldn't be having any more meetings, this should be shut down, and that's it. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Everybody just hold their applause until the very end, please, so that we're there, everybody has comment.
Yes, Kim Spellman, Sixth Great Pond Road, just off of Summer Street. I just wanted to address, I'm sorry, can't read the name, J. Mello, comments about density's hard, you know, at a certain point, if we want to develop, we have to decide either we're going to, or we're not going to. But the "we" in that equation is the owner of the property, or the, in this case, the owner, developer of the property. That owner, developer, needs to decide if it's worth the money to build in accordance with the current zoning. Presumably, I don't know how many houses he could put on there, under the, maybe it's five, presumably, he's decided he can't make enough money under that scheme, so he's decided to build a senior village.
Right.
That's his choice, but he's not building a senior village. So if he wants to develop and make money, you know, maybe he can't do. So if he wants to develop and make money, you know, maybe he can't do it under the, under the current zoning. I can't build five houses on my land. You know, I have two acres. I can't build five houses. Maybe I could build one. I don't know. He's the one that decides, not, he doesn't, the board, as I understand it, doesn't get to decide to just waive the current regulations for no reason. There needs to be a necessity, and there's not.
Thank you. Just hold your applause, please. Name and address, please.
Eric Beers, 493 Summer Street, directly across the street. You talked about density. He started at forty-four and you got him down to twenty-eight. Forty-four was just a ridiculous number to start with. And the fact that he added, I think it's 496 Summer, the, the house to the north, that was clearly done to get this, the acreage, to get more units. And it's all about putting money in his pocket. That's all this is for. And nobody wants it. Nobody needs it. The housing crisis, what's that? For single-family houses? There's not enough?
For, um, multiple.
Housing.
Housing in general.
This isn't gonna change that by adding more, right? How is senior living gonna help your housing crisis?
It's a unit-based housing crisis only.
You're already over two-point-five percent. Didn't that come up earlier?
Yes.
That's for the town. It's not the way this works. It's a unit-based housing crisis in the region. Regionally, we are missing housing.
Yeah, two different topics.
Okay.
They're gonna, they're gonna present the letter.
All right, I misunderstood that.
There's a, there's a state need for housing in general across all genres, and then there's the town who has a bylaw for senior village, which says two-point-five percent of, or units for regular, what is it? Well, uh, single-family housing, you mean, is that it?
For what?
The two-point-five percent of all single-family units.
Yes, yes, based on the single family.
Will dictate the number of senior units you could have in town.
Okay.
In order to go above that capacity, the planning board has to give the applicant a waiver.
And when we talk about the housing crisis, that's on a regional level. We don't, you know, there's a housing crisis in Franklin, but the housing crisis we speak about's on a regional level.
Okay. And then you can talk about traffic all day long. That's, that's already overcrowded.
I believe there's a traffic analysis included in the report.
We provide traffic information in the application.
Right, but don't you agree there's already too much traffic in here? I mean, right up and down here, especially, you're adding people everywhere, and they're gonna flow everywhere in town. So it's not like it's gonna be one area.
Okay. That's all.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Kane Bearson. I'm his wife, actually, Eric's, at 493 Summer Street. First, I just had a couple of questions. So what is the actual cost of a quote-unquote "affordable" unit in this proposed project? I guess I would ask the gentleman sitting at the table right here.
Uh, be, uh, stand. Go ahead, Steve.
Or whoever, whoever wants to answer. In this particular proposed unit, they're talking about having three or four affordable units? How affordable is a unit when the other units are supposedly gonna be sold for eight-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars per unit? So what's an affordable unit? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and I, yeah, actually, I think Maxine answered this at the last meeting. I can defer to her, but it's based on, um, the, the federal puts together, it's eighty percent of median income for the region, and so we have to go based on what those guidelines are, and that determines what the amount of affordable housing is. So it's not up to the developer to determine the amount. There are, there is calculations that's put together to determine what the affordable amount is based on state regulations.
All right. The other question I had is, yes, I do, I was reading over all of their notes, or the beta notes, about how a traffic study had been done and the, you know, they think that only in this type of housing, only three-point-seven trips per day would be adding per, um, unit being built onto Summer Street. I don't know how you can actually figure that out when only one person has to be fifty-five or over to live there, that there could be someone under fifty-five that, very well, those people.
That's actually not accurate. Um, you do have to be fifty-five-plus for all residents unless you have a waiver for medical need.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Not to, not to correct you.
Oh, no, 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 please. I must have mis, misread that. Nope, that's fine. So can I ask, this traffic study that was done, I don't remember seeing anything, like, across our roads that would, our road on Upper Summer Street that would actually show that a traffic study had been done about how much traffic is already being, like, how many people are already traveling on Summer Street? I might have missed that. Just curious.
The traffic report's in.
Should be online.
Online?
I have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
We have professional traffic engineers review the reports.
So this particular traffic report, how we do this, is we say, "All right, we've got a table, and it says, with this development, X number of trips are expected from a typical development of the style."
Okay.
Based on Y number of units." So it's just a table.
Okay.
X times Y equals the, in this particular, uh, situation, that came like one-hundred-and-four trip per day.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I probably should have started off by saying that, first, I know how much time each and every one of you have actually put into looking at this. And I'm not sure if you were around about seven years ago, when this whole thing started, some of you looked new, so, but I still appreciate all the time and effort that you have actually put into, um, doing this. I was recently at a town meeting where Mr. Helen was and, um, and some of the town counselors, and they were talking about how, um, it's so important for all of us to come together as a community, as a neighborhood, except for a few. We have come together to support each other because we appreciate and respect each other and have huge concerns about this project if it's approved. This will not improve our neighborhood or improve the quality of our environment. In fact, it would do the opposite. We built our home on this street with the intention of peacefully living here for the rest of our lives. We only have one home. We do not have a second home where we can escape to, to get away from the cold or for half of the year. This project, as my husband mentioned, is about only one family. This type of housing does not fit in or belong in our neighborhood, no matter how much density is involved, where every single one of us in our neighborhood are taxpayers. And I truly hope that before you vote on this project, that all of our concerns will be taken seriously. I ask each and every one of you to please put yourselves in our place and ask yourselves tonight, would I want this project on my street? Would I want it behind my house or across the street from my house? I know that each and every one of you up there are extremely intelligent people, and, and when I listen to you, I'm amazed at how much you all know about this. Because actually, I don't know anything about density and inclines and, and all that. But this project is being proposed to the board as a senior village for one reason and one reason only. It's not about helping the town or the senior citizens of Franklin. It's about cramming as many housing units onto the landowner's property and about the millions of dollars that he would make on having this type of housing project on his land. As Ms. Love mentioned earlier, though I know we already talked about this, the, the town of Franklin has already reached really where they need to be. If this is approved, many other residents who live near or own five-plus acres in Franklin that isn't currently being, are built on, may end up having to go through everything our neighborhood has had to go through. And there'll be people lining up down, down the hall to rezone their land to a senior village overly. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Just name and address.
Yep, Brian Redfern, 115 Summer Street. So I live on the section of Summer Street that's between King and the center of town. I'm not a NIMBY guy, right? I'm not concerned about this because it's in my backyard. I live near a lot of multifamily, larger kind of structures on my end of Summer Street. I have serious concerns about the traffic, the lack of a sidewalk between King Street and Penny Lane and all the way down there. I mean, just between King Street and Penny Lane, like, trying to walk on Summer Street there is deadly, like, you are taking your life in your hands. In the intersection on King Street, where the two different Summer Streets come, come together, like, that is already getting out of control. It can take me upwards of five minutes to take a left onto King Street. I have to go down Cross Street to get anywhere. If I'm going anywhere on Central Street, I have to use Cross Street. That intersection's out of control. In the traffic down further on King, in front of, like, the King Street Diner, I mean, that's starting to back up to Parmenter at this point. It's starting to back up to Parmenter multiple times a day. Like, it, it's just, it's not, it's not sustainable to put this kind of structure in that area. It's, it's, it's really about the area that you're looking to, that they're looking to build in, in the sustainability of it there. It doesn't meet the master plan of the town, right? It's not walkable without sidewalks, and Summer Street is not currently walkable. My section of Summer Street is gloriously walkable. I love it. I walk downtown all the time. That section of Summer Street absolutely is not. I appreciate all the granite curbs, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody else?
Hi, good evening. Chris Wolf, 489 Summer Street, right across from, um, uh, the project. It's a couple of quick questions, and I can take my answers afterwards. Can we get an estimate of how long construction would take from breaking ground to getting certificates of occupancy? That's one. Second, the twenty-foot, um, admission road, whatever it is, the non-driveable one, the fire access road, that's twenty-foot wide, so how wide would the deforestation be? And what kind of impact? I'd like the board to consider on the overall character and environment of the zone that that would have. Like, it's just, I would think, decimate a huge swath of the forest, but that's just my opinion. I'd like you to think about that. Thirdly, as people have already mentioned, as someone in that target demographic now, yes, any contribution towards a sidewalk into town, I thought I brought this up at a meeting, one of the meetings last year, that should be considered as well, because otherwise, that really makes the whole downtown area inaccessible to people in that demographic, even if they are still active. Fourthly, I'm not clear of the, um, over-fifty-five rules. I think there was some mention earlier of it, but if the current occupants of 488, uh, Summer Street, which as you'll know in the development plan is Unit 10, I believe, the owner of that, according to the property records, I think, is a partner of Mr. Hunchard, and the current occupants, I don't know how many there are exactly, they seem very nice, but they're all in their twenties and thirties, so I don't know if they're gonna be removed. Presumably, they're, have some kind of relationship with the current owner of some sort, either as friends or renters.
Children.
Um, right. But I think under the grounds of the plan, they're all supposed to be over-fifty-five.
Children's children.
Yeah. Um, so, then, then finally, I'm not a map-reading expert, but I think anyone could figure out that there's a ten-foot drop from the front of the houses to the back of the houses, and given the recent fun that everyone on the hill there, where it's always a couple of degrees colder than the rest of town, have enjoyed with the ice in the last week, I'd have to raise, uh, questions about the safety of the ice risk on that kind of elevation for especially people in the older age group. And then I had an observation on the issue of density and the, um, argument that you should either have a high density of a certain level or no density at all, like, no development at all. But then would ask, what would that do to the character of the neighborhood and the town itself, just plonking in a high-density, um, group of, uh, buildings for no particular reason? So, and then on the income-level issue, you're gonna have to be a wealthy person or a two-income couple, working couple, to buy one of these properties, just a no-brainer, right? So I don't see any benefit to Franklin couples looking to downsize to somewhere that they can age in place at all from that project. And I could go on and on, but I think my time is up.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
I'll go real quick.
Just, thank you.
I promise I'll be quick.
Just name and address, please.
I'm current level. I live at 711 Summer Street. I've been living in Franklin for almost fifty years now. In the past five years, the town of Franklin has approved projects of condominium complexes, apartment complexes. I mean, I think we've approved more units in the last five years than we have in the last fifty years combined. And it's talked about, it's created traffic problems over the holidays. It took me forty-five minutes to go from BJ's to Star Market. So my question to the board is, i-if the bylaws state that we have a certain limit for this senior housing, have we determined that there's a greater need for this senior living besides what the bylaws have in place? And if so, when does it stop? When do we stop accepting new applications for new senior livings? Does it go on forever, or do we get to go by the bylaws at some point in time?
Maybe, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, I think, Mr. Chairman. The bylaw, um, does state that allows the planning board to, to grant this waiver. So it's up to these elected officials here to determine if the waiver should be granted or it should not be granted. So it's, it's not.
But, but is that put in place because, you know, you theoretically could have two permits at the same time, and this is a moving number, so you could approve one and then would be over the number? That's understandable, but just to leave it open and, and just disregard the bylaws?
I don't think it's disregarding. Like I just said, they, they can grant the waiver, thus the right has the planning board, and this being under a special permit, to grant waivers. I mean, waivers are granted for all different projects that, that come in front of us.
So you can, so we can keep applying for new ones?
But that's what the bylaw says, and that would get, or grants the planning board the permission to do so.
Okay. I, well, when I read it, it said only if the, the board sees that there's a need for senior living. Otherwise, once we hit the limits, absolutely no more will be granted. That's, that's how I read it.
Thank you. Any else have something?
Good evening.
Just name and address, please.
My name is Stephen Foley, and I live at 480 Summer Street. And each time we've been here, I've complained about the irrigation field, which is now irrigation field number six, which seems to be getting bigger and bigger. Each time I complain, their response is to make it larger. But I noticed this time, they, they refer to it in one of the early drawings as, as "community amenity space." And then it, it's, it then continues in all the other pages as part of the, the irrigation field. And this "community amenity space," is that a euphemism for a pickleball court? Because that's what it sounds like to me. I don't know whether they can build anything above the, the irrigation field, but it's, they certainly shouldn't be able to. And, and again, that irrigation field is right adjacent to both my property and, and Sally Winter's property. And the slope of the, of the, of the land in that area is downhill. So once that overflows, which it invariably will, it's gonna be trickling down or washing down onto both my property and, and Sally's property. So that is a problem for me.
That's one of the comments that we're still looking at in the design, so yes.
Another problem I have is, they've made the, the emergency access into now a, a walking path, which me, and, and this is all elevated above my property and Sally's property, so that the people who are gonna be walking by now are gonna be walking, watching me in my backyard, and so no more sunbathing in the nude. Not that there ever was. Yes, thank you very much. And, and the, the, the problem I have is, you've got all these, these retaining walls. It, it's, it looks like the Vatican. Well, that's gonna create more water runoff, and is that water gonna be running off into the, into the Ankers Brook down, right down into the town forest and then into Ankers Brook? That's a concern I have, because... That's a concern I have, because that's such a beautiful town forest that we have, and we shouldn't allow it to be ruined. Another thing we have, every one of us that, here, that pays taxes gets their, their community preservation fee added into their taxes, and then the, the, the latest one, the, the, um, the water, the watershed fee that we're paying, all of that is going to be disturbed seriously when they chop down all the trees, which they're going to have to do to put this project in. It just doesn't, a-and the, the most important thing is the community at large. I've yet, at any of these meetings, to hear anybody other than the developers speak in favor of it. Everybody has unanimously been opposed to it, and continues to be opposed to it. I think that it's time for the board to say, look, enough is enough, no special permit. Thank you.
Brenda Brown, 737 Summer Street.
I will, but I do have some things to say. That, that's fine. I do agree that this has gone on long enough, I think we all have. We've endured a year, it's been exactly a year now, of just continuous postponing meetings, coming to meetings with the developer not fulfilling what he needed to fulfill, or justifying that this project should even be taking place. Back in February of 2024, in that meeting, it was stated that the town had exceeded the 2.5 percent units for senior housing, and the Department of Planning and Community Development recommended that the planning board require that the applicant provide proof that there was a critical senior housing need for the town, and if that waiver wasn't granted, that the project should be denied. That was their words. And so I asked, why wasn't this project denied a year ago? It, it, immediately, it just should not have even been considered. And isn't it typical that both of those boards should be working together collaboratively, and respect each other's opinions on these types of approvals for projects of this size? I received confirmation today that there is still no critical senior housing need. So again, doesn't the board have the responsibility to look out for the resident's best interests? And, and, and deny this? There just does not seem to be any logical reason as to why you would impose this, especially in rural residential zoned land. The other thing was, at that same meeting a year ago, it was stated that only 18 units were gonna be allowed for this, yet we've gone from 44 to 40 to 30, now we're down to 28. Why isn't it even being reduced down to the 18? I don't even know how we got to the 19. That, that, that number, I didn't even see where that came from. And that, that should've been from the very beginning, and it's just wasted everybody's time for, for a year now. We, again, we all purchased our land in rural residential neighborhoods, which would be single-family homes, and we continue to just have to fight to keep our properties protected and zoned as rural residential, and, and it's not right. And, you know, I know you're talking about dense properties, and, you know, have him stick four houses, or whatever you can, of single-family homes in there, and call it a day.
That's right.
This just goes on and on. This proposal is not about providing housing for aging, aging seniors living on a budget, I think we all know that, that's been kicked around now. It's about the applicant making as much money as he can, and they shouldn't be allowed to rezone the land just to accomplish that. If so, again, where does it end? Do we just, you know, do away with all residential, rural residential land in Franklin? And again, these seniors are not gonna be able to afford these homes, and by the time they're built, which is gonna be, what, five years from now, or whatever, what are we talking, a million dollars at that point, maybe even more? The traffic study, you know, just the construction alone, once this thing starts, the traffic and the noise for years, years, we just endured two houses going up in back of us, in back of 737, took them three years to do it with constant jackhammering, noise, construction, dirt, it was, it was horrible. So, make no mistake, this is gonna be way longer than that. The developer claims that traffic will be less than that of a typical family residential development, because many of the residents are gonna be retired, which is ridiculous. And yet, he also just stated earlier that most, um, over 55 won't be retired, so that's contradictory in what he had said earlier, to begin with. If they are retired, they're gonna have a lot more time on their hands to be driving around, um, so, that's just gonna add to, to the traffic situation. I'm just trying to get my point across, Chairman Rondo, because for some reason, it's, it's, it's unbelievable as to why this is still going on after a year.
Can I interrupt and just answer that question?
Yes, please.
The reason it is, is because they filed, and we had our first public hearing.
Uh-huh.
I think they might've come back one other time and continued until October, and then in October, they had not come before us, and at our last planning board meeting, when they were scheduled, and asked for another continuance, we asked them to come in at this meeting, and if they did not show up at this meeting, we would be voting to close the hearing, and voting on the permit. The applicant has continued the hearings, we have not as a planning board.
No, I understand that, that's what's, that's what's so aggravating, is they just keep continuing it till when?
So that, so the answer to that question for you, and, and I think I will just speak for myself, I would like to see, if there is not a critical need proven for this project, we will make a motion and, and vote on the waiver.
Tonight?
Not for the first, tonight?
Tonight, tonight?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight? So, so, why aren't we prepared to do it tonight? I mean, why was it postponed again?
The applicant should be afforded an opportunity to defend their position, so, because that's-
They had a year to figure it out.
Nobody who's not getting paid wants this. Please. How would you get paid?
Pardon yourself.
Excuse me?
We're volunteers.
Oh, good.
That's out of line.
Unnecessary.
Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Alright, and, and just to remind you, one last thing, again, that September 23rd meeting, Chairman Rondo, you did say that the applicant needed to come back, and yet he did not, in the October meeting, with a plan that suited the town and the neighbors, and clearly, it is not suiting the neighbors. Thank you.
Yeah. I just, I need to address your comments, sir, and I don't usually do this, but to insinuate that any of us are up here getting paid by this developer?
Not you.
No, or any of us.
Maybe.
I'm sorry, any of us.
Yes.
That is not appropriate.
Totally aligned, it's totally aligned, it's totally aligned.
It's rude and disrespectful to all of us who spend our time up here and give up things that's being wise.
Not you.
I don't care, it's me, I'm speaking for the resident.
You know what, they're the State Board of Ethics, you are welcome to contact the State Board of Ethics, sir, and I speak with them all the time about matters.
What's your name?
My name is Jay Mallow, it's right here. I work in the public sector, for you to accuse me of that is disgusting, alright? Disgusting.
Deal with it.
So you can go to the State Board of Ethics, tough guy, and you can file a complaint.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
To continue, continue.
To continue.
We're gonna continue.
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing. This is, I'm pleading a complaint. You would motion to vote on the waiver, then?
No.
Enough. Enough.
I-
Enough from everybody.
Um, I, I should get a chance, because this is affecting my property the most.
Not when people are yelling at us and calling us.
Well, I wasn't yelling, Beth.
Make a motion to continue.
This, this is not fair. This is just not fair, Mr. Rondo.
March 24th.
Make a motion to continue.
This is not fair, Beth. I, I've worked very hard to come to these meetings.
March 24th. Yes, please don't talk over us.
Can I just ta-talk for two minutes, please? You want, you wanna know what he, Mr. Rondo said to me on the phone, which was disrespectful? He said, "Why don't you buy the property you're selling, Maple Gate?" How rude and disrespectful is that?
Motion for second, all in favor?
How rude? How rude?
You're way too sensitive about it. I mean, you're gonna cry about it, there's no need to cry, there's a price, and then you can vote on it, make a decision. You're volunteers, but you don't know right from wrong, just vote on it, make a decision. The faster it brings up some anger, I should tell you something.
I mean, go with me, babe.
Chris, somebody, um, yeah. We can't do anything.
Did you make a motion, what?
No, I made a motion.
I think she left, I think she left the building. I saw her walk down the stairs.
All her stuff is there?
Oh, all her stuff is there?
Yeah, I just don't want her, I just wanna- Okay, just make sure she's okay.
My son's third birthday. We can't close the door.
No, it's just closing hearings. No, the meeting is not closing.
Do you find her? Do you find her? No? Do you want me to go check the ladies' room?
Yeah, the light was off.
The light was off? Chris? Her car's off?
I'll just make a motion to adjourn, we have the majority.
Alright, second?
Make a motion to adjourn, chairman, very second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chris?